Second.
I, Renee Butler.
Aye.
Jimenez.
Aye.
Caballero.
Aye.
Trent.
Aye.
Steinfeld, aye.
Palace.
Aye.
Gonzalez, absent with notice.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Today is Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025. Thank you for taking time of your summer or your days off to be here or your evenings. Oh, can we have a vocal to establish court?
Vocal here or present? Jimenez?
Here.
Steinfeld, here. Butler?
Here.
Caballero?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Palace?
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
All right, I'm gonna head over there to start. All right, we are gonna invite up our wonderful team of teaching and learning directors, and we're all going to be participating in the district improvement and local assessment data. They will each introduce themselves as a reminder to the board as they come up. All right, we're all in order. Okay. All right. So I'm just gonna do a little bit of an intro here regarding how we approach the district improvement process as a district as well, and then there will be some data given to you. Keeping in mind that this kind of, we do this presentation in the summer because then, once we start the school year, you're gonna hear from each school, one school a month, who are, who then share their school improvement plans, which align with our district improvement plan. So this kind of gives you the overall goals for the district this year, and then we will continue to give the board updates each month at a school-by-school level. So when we approach the district improvement process, what we always do is focus on the board goals, the goals that the Board of Education has set for the district, to make sure that the decisions we're making, the goals that we're setting are in alignment with what the board expectations are. So when we speak tonight, we'll be speaking primarily to Goal One, about being college and career-ready with 21st century skills. But clearly, we focus on all of those key goals, and it is a priority, right? We can't get to Goal One without creating those safe, caring, and healthy environments for our students. So that is something that we always focus on, but for this presentation tonight, you'll be hearing primarily focusing on Goal One. We also remind ourselves of our vision, mission, and beliefs for the district. You know, this is really the cornerstone of what we do as a district. Everything that we do should go back to what we believe, and these beliefs were created by key stakeholders within our community, as well as feedback from the board, staff, obviously, community, family, students. So this is very important to the work we do. Additionally, you'll remember last year that the board adopted a resolution to support Vision 2030. And so when we think about the goals for the district, we also have to be thinking about what are the Vision 2030 goals for the state of Illinois? Where do we want our educational systems to be moving through Vision 2030? So some of the, there's several key areas of focus in Vision 2030, but when we're talking about school and district improvement, we're talking about that future-focused learning and that shared accountability, where we are also focusing on growth and proficiency over time. Additionally, again, something that was created with feedback from all stakeholder groups was what do we want the experiences of our students to look like in our schools? What opportunities do we want to be providing with them so that they do achieve the portrait of a graduate, and that they get these experiences at every level of their education, from preschool through eighth grade? Additionally, when we talk about school district improvement, we have to be thinking about how we spend our dollars to make sure that what we're doing is supporting district improvement. So since the start of EBF back in 2017, we have used these elements to guide the work that we do, and also to guide where we prioritize staffing and funding to make sure that we are at the levels recommended by the evidence-based funding elements. You've seen this slide multiple, multiple times over the year. Each year, we add a little bit more, but this reminds us of where we have prioritized those EBF investments over time, from back in 2018, through where we are today. So you'll note that this school year, we have a little bit less. Number one, we're getting closer and closer to meeting those expectations of the EBF elements for a school district our size, but also, we have some different financial challenges that we need to make sure we're keeping in mind as we move forward. So we all are aware of the various state and federal budget implications. We do know that as a state currently, we are being prorated in several areas, meaning we're not receiving 100% of the reimbursement funding from the state in these particular areas. So with that in mind, we have to use some of that EBF funding to cover those holes. So special education, private facility tuition, we're getting 77% reimbursement, transportation 79, and special education transportation 69%. And so while there have been years that we've been able to use all the EBF additional dollars for additional staffing allocations and resources, we have had to start to use some of those to cover the holes of the proration at the state level. We are following very closely the federal funding that has not yet been released in Title II, Title III, Title IV. And so we want to reiterate that there are no staffing positions funded through those grants. And so while you may hear things out there that districts are cutting staff positions because they don't have these funds, that is not the case for us. Those funds are specific to professional development and mentoring, EL services, professional, and professional supports, and then academic enrichment. Obviously, all extremely valuable things that we need as a district. In those three areas, we have, it's about $325,000 at this point that we expect, that is being held at this point. Those could be released, so we're continuing to follow that. As in finance today, and I know Jenny will talk about it later, we discussed, we are planning for all scenarios, and our, with our budgets, as what, if those lines are either smaller or zero, we are planning for those projections and ensuring that we make sure that we have the resources that we need in those areas. Also, something that we need to continue to pay attention to is some of the implications of the recent federal bill around our nutrition program and our CEP. So as you know, as a district, we qualify for CEP, which means all of our students get free and reduced lunch, or, I'm sorry, all of our students get breakfast and lunch. We have to keep an eye on that because that could certainly change, given the federal landscape right now. So it is something that we have for this school year, but we need to keep an eye on that, same as Medicaid funding. You know, we also need to keep an eye on that. So there's a lot of uncertainty, as you know, right now, but we are making sure that we are following the latest updates in these areas. We are advocating, I've sent letters to our federal legislators advocating as a district to please release these funds. So we will continue to do that because they are much-needed funds to support the services we have for our students. So when we talk about district and school improvement, and we really zero in on the beliefs that we hold as a district, these are the two that are really kind of stand out for our presentation tonight. And so you're gonna hear from our, our group of directors tonight, and I can tell you that the knowledge and talent and dedication of this group behind me here is just really invaluable to our district, and the expertise they bring in each of their areas really creates a strong cohesive team that helps not only in the district improvement process, but also in supporting all of the school improvement efforts as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to Amanda.
All right. Hello, hi, I'm Dr. Amanda Thompson. I'm the Director of Early Learning. I was driving here like 15 minutes ago or whatnot, and I was thinking, I wish I wasn't presenting tonight. And the reason I was thinking that is because I truly wish my team was here. So I'm gonna share some preschool and kindergarten data with you that I'm pretty proud of, but it's really not my work, it's their work. And they worked so hard to make this happen. I always talk to my team about, we look at kids developmentally, and I'm like, if you figure out where a kid is developmentally, where they are, and you scaffold to the next step, you're going to see growth. End of story. It's not hard. And so, so anyways, I truly wish they were here, and I wish their principals were here. I honor the time they have off, and I always tell my team, go play and take time off, and they deserve it. But this is truly a reflection of all the work that everyone's done as we put experiential learning into place across both preschool and kindergarten this year. So this is our preschool data, and what you're looking at is Teaching Strategies' goal data. So Teaching Strategies' goal data is observational data. So that means that teachers observe children. So they take pictures of kids, they make videos of kids, they make anecdotal notes of kids. And then they take that information, and there's this goal assessment system, and it's based on developmental levels of a child from birth to third grade, and then it ranks them where they are. So it's gonna tell them developmentally where they are. So child may be functioning 18-month level, they might be functioning at 24-month level, so on and so forth. And so it looks at all domains. So here in preschool, we do social, emotional, physical, language, cognitive, literacy, and math. And so this graph shows children that are meeting and exceeding, and it shows fall data and spring. So fall isn't like where they came in at because fall is basically around Thanksgiving. So that's like the first time that we look at this summatively. So again, these are the percentage of children that were meeting or exceeding in the fall, and then, as you can see, the turquoise or whatever color that is, is the spring. So we had nice growth across the board. If I look at this, we had the, like, the greatest area of growth in math, which I can't wait to share this with the team because that was something we focused on. So typically, that's the area that we have the lowest rate in. So that was something we really focused on in our professional development with them this year. So I was happy to see that reflected. Okay, all right. All right. And then, as you're aware, we moved to experiential learning in kindergarten this year. So we started to collect the observational assessment also in kindergarten. Now, you'll notice on this, we don't have math, but that's because in math, we don't use Teaching Strategies' creative curriculum, we use the Bridges curriculum. So for kindergarten, we just collect this data for social, emotional skills, language, and literacy. And then, you'll see on here, we have Spanish language and Spanish literacy, so that's the dual-language classrooms. So they collect this information on the kids' language and literacy skills in Spanish. And you can see that phenomenal growth that we had in the dual-language programs in particular this year. So. And then, we use the information from some of these objectives in this when we do the district improvement plan, and Bee's gonna share a slide later that has a tree diagram, and you'll see where we align, where we look at this data when we're looking at that kindergarten, preschool kindergarten growth. All right. And then, we use additional data to look at kindergarten and first grade, and Allison's gonna share that.
Good evening. I'm Allison Apparicio, the Assistant Director of Special Education. We are looking at FastBridge early math for our kindergarten and first-grade students. We use FastBridge for kindergarten and first grade as our benchmark assessment. You can see the results from fall, winter, and spring of this past school year. The assessment measures early numeracy skills. It includes the subtests of numeral identification, number sequence, decomposing, place value, and story problems. They show an understanding of the skills assessed, but they are still struggling with that timed piece to the test. So they know what they're doing, but they cannot complete the test within the timeframe that is allotted to them. And we saw benchmark increases at every window. And then this is our FastBridge data for early literacy. This measures literacy skills, which includes letter sounds, word segmenting, syllable reading, decodable words, sight words, and CBM are curriculum-based measures. So that is, I believe, is that fluency? That's fluency, so that's rate of reading. Students show an understanding of the skills assessed, but struggle with automaticity. So again, that timed component to the assessment. And we did see benchmark increases at every window. And we don't just use FastBridge, we use other assessments that help us really understand, you know, that biliterate piece to our students. And we continue to integrate structured phonics and systematic literacy instruction with the implementation of our new literacy resource, Amplify, which is based on the science of reading.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Cindy, Director of Learning Management and Assessment. And what you'll see up here is NWEA MAP growth. This is for our math. NWEA MAP is our benchmark assessment that we use in grades two through eight. Students take the assessment three times a year. And just something to be aware of as we look at data this year, and then when you start looking at data next year, every five or six years or so, NWEA creates new norms on which the data is based. And those norms are what give us the expected scores for how children fall within different percentiles. And so right now, our scores are based on the 2020 norms, but the 2025 norms are starting. And so, starting next year, we'll be viewing the data in that way. And we've met with NWEA and seen it conferences and to understand the, what the new norms look like and how that they've changed. And they've changed in a lot of different and unique ways. So I just wanna preface this with, the next time you see NWEA data, it may look different because the norms have changed. And so what we're gonna be doing over the next couple of years is viewing things with the new norms and viewing them with the old norms so that we can compare. Because in many instances, the, the norms have decreased, especially with the impact of COVID. And so it may look in some places like our students are performing better than they did. It's just what the norms show. So the scores aren't changing, it's just how they're ranked and what that compares to across the country. So just to be aware that you'll hear about that more and more, the new norms, the old norms, and what that means. But NWA assesses math skills, there's four domains that are assessed, and teachers see the scores for each of those domains. The scores up here are for the last three years, the spring scores, so how we ended the year. And you can see, we've seen that continual math growth year over year. And that 60% of our students are actually above the 50th growth percentile. So if you think about growth percentiles, students take a test, and then when they take the next test, we look at the growth percentile. And if they grow higher than the 50th percentile, that's average growth, that means they're starting to catch up and achieve, close the achievement gap. So we really focus on that growth percentile. And in math, we're seeing high levels of students above that 50th growth percentile, making that catch-up growth. This is the data for NWA MAP math for this school year. So you'll see fall, winter, and spring. So you can see in the fall where students came in and where they ended in the spring. Going forward with our district improvement plan, we're gonna be focusing on operations and algebraic thinking, specifically the Common Core standards within there, which also includes expressions and equations in the element, or the middle school levels. Those standards have shown to have the greatest impact, both on NWEA, but more importantly, have higher weight on the IAR. And really, operations and algebraic thinking, if you can't do those, it's harder to do geometry and statistics and all those pieces. They're the more fundamental skills. And then numbers and operations as well, kind of goes along with that, is the other area that we're gonna be focusing on. And then in middle school, on ratios and probability, because again, that has a high impact and is an area that we need to grow in to see our overall levels grow.
Hi, I'm not sure if anyone introduced themselves, but I will. Jeanette Briseño, Director of Language Acquisition. I'm going to present the second portion of NWEA MAP. This one focuses just on literacy. Lindsay just presented on the math portion of it. So as Lindsay said, it is an assessment that we give to our second grade and eighth, through eighth grade students. This right here that you see are the trends that we see from the last three years, just focusing on our spring data. We can see, you know, what is it that's being measured with this assessment? We have literary text, informational texts, and vocabulary. Please keep in mind that this year was our implementation of our new literacy resource, Amplify. And what you see side-by-side here is our literacy in English and also in Spanish. So once again, I think that was mentioned in a previous slide, parallel assessments for our dual-language students is very important to us here in D100. And then if you analyze the trends from, from these graphs, it shows us that 43% of our students are above, year after year, they're above the 50th growth percentile. Okay? So what this lends itself is, we not only focused on the trends from those three years, but we also took a look at our current year's data and said, okay, where are we in both English and Spanish, and what do we need to focus on? So for our district improvement plan, we're going to focus on informational texts, but with a focus on comprehension. And then we're also going to focus on constructed response. And again, that's something that will benefit both our English, NWEA literacy, and also our Spanish. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Fies, the Director of Special Education, and I'm here to talk about our subgroups. And so as Lindsay and Jeanette have just spoken about, the 50th percentile of growth for NWEA in math and reading, as you can see, the district as a whole in math, we had 59% of our students over that 50th percentile of growth. And then we wanna honor our subgroups and make sure that we're drilling down in the data to make sure that every student is learning. And so we have students with IEPs at 45%, and then our EL and dual students are about equal with that district overall growth, with 54% and about 59% in dual. And then, which overall, that's a slight decrease in math growth compared to last year, but then for the reading and the overall growth being in the 50th growth percentile, again, is a slight increase. As you can see, the district as a whole had 43% of our students in that 50th or above growth percentile. Students with IEPs were slightly below that, with 31% about. And EL and dual is, again, almost equal with the district growth as a whole.
All right. Hi, I'm Samantha Schuman, Director of Instructional Innovation, and I also support our gifted and accelerated programming in the district. So AIMS is our program at the middle schools. It stands for Advanced Inquiry of Mathematics, English, Spanish, Language Arts. And these, the students that are in these classes are cohorted together, and what's unique about this cohort is that we look at a variety of measures when they're in fifth grade to see how they're performing. And we wanna give them opportunities for accelerated placement. So specifically with math, you'll see here, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they're with the same teacher for three years. And in sixth grade, they cover sixth and seventh grade content. In seventh grade, they cover seventh and eighth grade content, so that they're ready by eighth grade to take Algebra I. And so, working at this pace, we have found that these students are still, they're kind of, they're going above and beyond and still growing just as much as we've wanted to see. They're going, they're growing above the 50th percentile. And so what that means is they're continuing to be challenged throughout their learning experience. So we are really proud of their, this is their achievement on MAP. So these are students that are performing in the upper percentiles on MAP in achievement. And the same goes for ELA. So these students are also cohorted. They are together. With the new schedule coming out, our students that are in dual classes will have an opportunity to take AIMS. With our new literacy resource, there were plenty of opportunities, they call it the challenge level, and independent projects that they were able to work on within our new literacy Amplify resource. So again, we continue to see students growing, even though they're already high performers, at the 50th growth percentile or higher. So they're exceeding. And then, we're seeing that translate to IAR scores. The other assessment that we've, we're in our second or third year, third year, that we've instituted to help us identify students who are accelerated and gifted, we wanted a measure that wasn't just testing academic, academics and standards, we wanted something that measured students' ability. So we administer the COGAT to students in second grade in the spring, and we administer the COGAT to students in fifth grade in late fall, early winter, because that helps us determine classes at the middle school for the following year. But the assessment that, that this assessment allows us to look at how they process information. It's not language-dependent, so all of our dual-language students participate in this. It gives us information how they're learning non-verbally, quantitatively, and verbally, how they're taking in all that information. And then we provide professional development throughout the year, helping teachers understand the reports that come back. Students that score in the top 99 on that assessment. So you'll see here, this is just the percentage of students that participate in the full battery. So we screen every second grader, everybody gets the screener, everyone has equal access to that. And then, when they score at the average or above average, we give them the full battery, so they have a greater opportunity to engage in multiple questions at all three of those, three of those categories. Then from there, you'll see on the next slide, this is where we're identifying students that are our top, top performers. So they're scoring eights and nines on COGAT, and we're able to identify them as gifted in our district. So when that happens, I work with the classroom teachers, the principal, the parents, to write specific differentiated goals for the, for the children, to make sure that we're still meeting their needs. This year, we have so many second graders coming in with nines on their COGAT, so it's really exciting to see. We're having more conversations than ever about how to differentiate for our students that are performing above grade level. That's not always a topic that comes up as often, but because we have these additional measures, we're able to really look at and differentiate for them as well in the classroom.
Hello, I'm Teresa Adelfia, Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction. So with all of that information, the district improvement team, a group of TANL, we have come up with our district improvement plan for this year. And so we'll start off with math. So our broad goal for math is by 2026, 40% of students in pre-K through eighth grade will meet or exceed standards in math on IAR. So looking at this screen, this is our tree diagram, so it does capture with more detail what that plan is. And so we do have this results goal that's focused on IAR because that is how we are, you know, held accountable publicly through the state. But if you look at our indicators and our measures, we are using more local assessments and classroom assessments to support, to see that growth overall. So for our kindergarten through second graders, our main focus is number sense. And so we want our students to have that automaticity and the foundational knowledge in numeracy in the earlier grades. And so for that, we'll be using our FastBridge information, as well as information that's coming from Bridges. In second through eighth grade, we're gonna move into constructed responses. We know that our students need more support in how they're explaining themselves when it comes to math, and we're going to target the standards that we saw, those areas of need in that local assessment data. So our OA and our NF standards for second through fourth grade, our fifth grade, again, enough, fractions are huge, as well as numbers in base 10. And then our middle school will be focusing on the ratios and probability and expressions and equations. And for that, we'll also be looking at the NWA data, as well as looking at some of the released items from IAR, so that they have, you know, exposure to what that looks like and what those expectations are.
All right, and here we have, B. Maldonado, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. Here we have the district IAR goal, or district improvement goal. 45% of students in pre-K eight will meet or exceed standards in literacy on IAR. And our tree diagram, similar to what Teresa explained, you'll see that big, broad goal and then that results goal, those indicators feed into those goals. And so we know that the children, you know, third and above are taking IAR, but you can't get there and you can't meet those expectations unless, unless some of those early indicators are met. And so in the pre-K to two, as the team mentioned, fluency and automaticity is an area that we see as an area of need, and so that is why that is selected as our indicator. We then move on to measures. How are we going to look at this on a consistent basis, on an ongoing basis? And so we have a variety of measures listed there, whether they're in Teaching Strategies goal, whether they're in FastBridge, or whether they are in some of the local assessments that we will be looking at as those are available to see how are we doing at those indicators, because obviously then those indicators will feed into our results goal. You'll see that in two through eighth grade, we have informational text as our focus. And again, we are looking at our NWEA as some of the team members presented, but we're also looking at some of the common assessments that we have, and we'll be looking at those fairly regularly. So our next steps to support our district goals of having that 40% of students meet or exceed in math and 45% of students are meeting and exceeding in literacy by 2026, we are advancing some key strategies that are aligned to data-driven instruction and resource fidelity. Those IAR-specific goals for third through eighth in the district improvement plan include targets for the K2 reading and math, and those obviously serve as foundational drivers for long-term academic success. Our professional learning communities continue, and in those professional learning communities, our teachers and staff are analyzing data to inform their instruction at every single grade level. Our implementation of our literacy resource continues, and our math resource continues, that will be sustained, focusing a lot on monitoring through district improvement data systems. Some of these are measure a variety of things, for example, classroom walkthrough data that we're looking at, using the specific resource criteria of that, of their implementation matrix. Looking at curriculum feedback forms that we ask our teachers to submit to us by grade level, by unit, so that we can have an understanding of, okay, what worked, what didn't work. And looking at end-of-year and mid-year teacher self-reflection forms, so that they can tell us how things are going with the implementation. We're also looking at ensuring fidelity of our implementation, again, of math and literacy resources for our students who are in special education. And we are continuing to monitor our experiential learning using observational data and supporting the use of the elementary science resource and our new master schedule in middle school specifically. Our school improvement teams continue to receive guidance and, on how to execute their actions from, you know, with, from our team, right? We look at their action plans and we try to see coherence, how are these matching, how are their school improvement goals matching up to the big district improvement goal? So these are our next steps. Thank you.
Any questions for any of them?
I always have questions. Great, it's okay. Can you remind me what the science curricula is for each middle, the middle and elementary school levels?
In elementary school, we use mystery science, as well as PLTW for STEAM. And then in middle school, we use Amplify Science and also Project Lead the Way for STEAM.
And then, do we have data on the science assessment?
For ISA, we do, but they have not come out with the formal scores yet. They're also looking at the cut scores and making adaptations, so we don't have that information just yet.
When we do, I would, I would think the board would be briefed on that, yeah?
Yes, once those are released, along with IAR. We do not have a science benchmark assessment. There are some places that do. We, we don't. It's something that we've looked at and thought about, but with the number of assessments our students take, and with the small percentage right now that science impacts our overall ratings, it's just not something that we're at yet, but we do have the ISA scores.
Yeah, I know that's something we've been talking about as far as like making science more of a slice of the pie there. I mean, I'm just going to say, like, you know, science incorporates all the things we're talking about here, literacy, math, communication, critical thinking, all that. And I know informational tech seems to be a common theme among what we need to target, right? Maybe just, I'm just thinking out loud about like what maybe our goals might be for, or vision for science instruction across the district and looking forward to seeing some of that data.
And I will add, as far as our district improvements and how that trickles into the school improvement plans, our middle school specifically also have their science teachers do constructed responses and monitor that data within their schools.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm just a science lady, that's all.
Great presentation, very detailed. I took a lot of notes, and it helped me even with my own child. I have, gosh, I hope this, hopefully this helps and doesn't cause any discomfort, but I actually want to humbly request, like unofficially request, two things. And this really is for the upcoming school presentations that come this year, right? So you can take this back in your own way to the, to the, to the, to the, to the schools. But one thing, not to say that we haven't already done this, but really I'm zeroing in on seeing examples that are being modeled for our students that typically score below the 50th percentile, and that could be in growth, the growth percentile or the achievement. I want to really see like how those things are differentiated. I want to see how it is different, how the interventions and things are going between the, the students that typically score below, as opposed to the kids who typically score above. Another thing that I would also humbly and totally unofficially request is to also see a demonstration, like Lindsay just did today, how thorough you explained the NWEA data, right? That is something that has always mystified parents, I know in my experience, and I try my best as an individual, but I have yet to see, and I'm not saying this is not being done, but I haven't seen it in my own experience as a district, really be like very hands-on, taking initiative to explain how that, what it is, what do we use it for, and how, and what do these scores mean, right? Because those 231s and that 167 means absolutely nothing to a person that's not inside of this education field. So just being able to see that, how we described NWEA and IAR for, for that fact, or for that matter. Samantha also did the same, very, like how she explained the COGAT, you know, are we doing that for all of our students' parents and, and how, and how articulate, how articulate and how well-versed are all of our staff with it for their, for their students when they go into those parent-teacher conferences and, and et cetera? So like I said, very humbly, very unofficially, but I would totally love to see like more of that get weaved into those upcoming school year presentations that the principals will be doing this year. But great job.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Caballero. So thank you for the presentation. I asked these questions ahead of time via email, and the answers were provided to me via email, to all of us actually. So now I'm just going to read them into the record for our constituents, for our people watching at home. Because you know everybody's watching right now, so. So my first question was that the stated goals are specifically about IAR. Is there a goal for students in K2? And so you, you incorporated it into your presentation, that the district improvement targets include specific goals for K2 reading and math, which I guess were the indicators that you talked about in that tree. So thank you. I asked, what does it mean to continue monitoring the implementation and to continue implementing? So thank you, you did a great job of explaining what that looks like, teacher reflection, the, the different forms, et cetera. Is there a district improvement plan? Where is it located? Is there a team? Do we have board representation on that team? And so then it was explained that the district improvement plan is this, right? And then in your presentation tonight, you made it explicitly clear that in the summer you present the goals to the board, and then during the school year, the schools present their data and how they're working towards those district goals. So thank you. And then you talked about the district improvement plan team. You said it's made up of directors, school administrators, and teacher leaders, and that board members are not part of that team. So, thank you. That's it for this. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some questions as well. Some of them were already answered, so I will just be brief. For the early childhood, seven to 52% in the Spanish, what year, what hold were the kids, the students? I missed that.
Yeah, so that, that's this one? Yes, go back, kinder. That's our kindergarten data.
Oh, kindergarten, thank you. Well, congratulations to that, because I-
Yes, congratulations to them, so, yeah. We have some very strong dual-language kindergarten teachers, so.
So, yes, so that clarification for also, we have dual language from early childhood all the way to eighth grade?
So we only have the dual-language program from kindergarten on, we don't have it in preschool.
Oh, so only, it starts in kindergarten?
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. And for Ms. Schuman, thank you so much also for the, for the information you gave us. Do we know how many students in each grade level or in total, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade do we have in the accelerated program?
I can provide you all with exact numbers, however, know that we have one section at each grade level, so that kind of ranges based on what our student cap is. But we're excited because next year we're opening up an additional section at both schools in math specifically, starting in sixth grade. So our scores, our students, we're really pushing those high students, and more students are qualifying for the AIMS program. So our students are closing that gap, and we're reaching that tier of, we want 80%, 90% of our students meeting and exceeding expectations, so we can give you those exact numbers.
Good to hear, thank you. So that means that only middle schools have the sections?
Correct.
Okay, but you also mentioned that in the COGAT data, second graders are scoring a nine. Can you explain a little bit about that?
Sure, so at the elementary level right now, and this has been like this for a few years, we're differentiating within the classroom, but there are students starting in third grade, and we included second graders this past year. And we have a, a teacher at every elementary school that provides some after-school enrichment opportunities, where there's usually a challenge-based learning theme or some type of project-based learning theme for their after-school program, and we've included second through fifth grade in that. So we identify students that are the top performers and provide them some additional enrichment after school on top of the differentiation that they're getting within their core curriculum. But students that are scoring at the nine, so the nine is the top tier of COGAT, and if their MAP scores are also in that top 1%, that 99, 90, 98, 99 percentile, we write a gifted plan for them. So we have conversations with their parents about what it means to be gifted and talented. And especially if they're in the dual-language program, we've identified several students that are gifted in both languages, which has been a celebration for, for our students. So we start that as early as finishing up second grade, so going into third, those conversations begin.
That's good to know, thank you. I appreciate the information that was given because he was able to understand it a little more. Also, I think this is for Lindsay. Thank you for explaining about the NWEA and about the norms, because I, I actually noticed that in, with my own students with the data, that the math scores were, like, many were very high, and I was like, what is going on? So, and so I investigated that, and it was because of the norms. So thank you for explaining, but I also agree with Ms. Butler that parents need to understand it a little more, so maybe that will be incorporated. So thank you all for your work on this.
Thank you for your feedback, and we will definitely take that in terms of helping our parents understand that so that they can help their students.
Thank you. Okay, I don't think, do we have anymore?
No?
I just wanted to add that, you know, I know there's lots of questions about the IAR data, and it's not official yet at the state level, so we can't share that publicly yet. However, we have access to preliminary scores that help drive these decisions as well. But in November, once the, the Illinois Report Card data is released publicly, then we will do a formal presentation for the board that includes all of the IAR data. That data would be based on last year's district improvement goals, but that will help us see, you know, where we were in comparison to those goals last year. But with the preliminary data, that's still helping to drive the decisions we're making for this upcoming school year. We just can't share it publicly. And on that note as well, the norms for the state of Illinois on IAR are also going to be changing. And so you will likely hear us talking about our current, our scores in comparison to what the norms have been and what they are now, because we also want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. But knowing that the state is shifting, is anticipating to shift the scores, so when they are posted publicly in, at the end of October, I believe it's October 30th, they get posted publicly, those will be reflected with the new norms, which on the sites will be difficult to navigate because it will look very different. But we have committed to making sure we calculate it both ways, so we actually know what it looked like based on our current norms versus the next round of norms. So lots of norm, you'll probably hear that word a million times this year, there will be lots of talk about norms.
Thank you, I appreciate it. One more last question. What grades do the science IAR? Only fifth grade and eighth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Or ISA, like.
ISA.
Yeah, ISA.
That's true, thanks.
Thank you all for being here today in your presentation.
All right, so we did have two FOIA requests this month that were submitted to the board, and I will turn it over to Jenny for the finance report.
Thanks. Our bank balance as of today is 65.7 million. Our revenue for the month to date is only 463,000. We do not receive state aid payments during the summer. Those will hopefully start in August, and we have not received any tax revenue that hopefully, I know tax bills are delayed by a minimum of two months, so we will hopefully in the fall start receiving tax revenue. Our cash flow short is up on the screen and in Board Book. Our end of the year, for the month of June, was revenue was 4.6 million. Overall revenue for 2025 fiscal year was 67.2 million, which was 99.39% of the budget. Our expenses for the month of June was 7.8 million. Total year-to-date for fiscal year 2025 was 66.1 million, which was at 99.12% of the budget. And our fund balance as of the end of June was 64.6 million. And then go on to the next one, the grant snapshot. These Title I, Title II, Title IV all end on June 30th. Our early childhood grants also end on June 30th, but I know our Title III goes until August 30th. So we are starting to see, this will be updated for next month, and you'll start to see cares go away altogether. You'll also see cares go away altogether on our budget. So if you can go to the draft budget for the next one. Go to the end of the second page. Thank you very much. Oh, you have, yep, there you go. Right there. Okay, so our ending of fiscal year 2025, we ended at 1.1 million in the positive. Our projection right now for fiscal year '26 is will be 5.9. However, we will do a fund transfer to transfer that money. We do have that money in reserves set aside. And we are keeping an, a, an eye on both of our state and our federal funding to see where that goes. If you remember the budget timeline, tonight on the board agenda, you have to approve the tentative FY '26 budget. It will go into the suburban life. It will go into the Suburban Life. Hearing notice, not the budget, but the hearing notice goes into the Suburban Life. It'll be published next Thursday for the budget to be available next Friday. It's then on display at Laverne for a minimum of 30 days. It's all, we always go over. And the final budget will be approved in September and then submitted to the state and the county and the Regional Office of Education. And I believe, grab my notes, that's the end of my report.
Any questions?
Yes, again, Caballero. I sent these ahead of time, so thank you for the answers ahead of time. Now I'm just going to, for transparency's sake, read them into the record. So my question was, looking at the expenditure report, where, you know, it, it's a very thorough report, multiple pages, but I did look for the board line item, and there's a line item called board supplies. And so my question was, what, what is that? What are board supplies? And so the answer was that it's used for staff appreciation, like a breakfast, for board recognition, retirement gifts, years of service, and any other supplies we might use here, such as snacks. And I would like the record to show that Ms. Pedraza does an excellent job providing us with snacks, so thank you.
I actually have a question about Suburban Life. Do we still have that?
Yeah.
Is it in?
They've, they've moved a lot of it to digital.
It's digital?
Yeah.
So does this, is this forward to community members or parents, a link to it? Because I haven't, no?
It's just available.
It's just available.
Mm-hmm. There, there is legislation where they're trying to make it, where you can actually just post it online on your website, which would make so much more sense.
Probably.
So much more sense, but that, but right now that's, it's published in print.
Well, thank you for sharing that, because I was not even aware that we still have Suburban Life.
Oh, yes.
Thank you for asking that question, because I forgot. That was the other question I asked, was what was the timeline or what was the process? And so, yes, I know that it has to be, it can't just be on our school website, so I was asking like which newspaper? Apparently the Suburban Life, so thank you.
Mm-hmm, sure.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Press's report, finance?
Today, today, Kenny presented on some restructuring that.
Thank you. Building and grounds?
We had a buildings and grounds meeting yesterday. Just lots going on there. District has been working hard at replacing roofs and completing projects for HVAC in multiple buildings. You know, we've got lots going on with like new flooring, new doors, you know, cleaning out grease traps after, you know, 30 years, things like that. So we are looking at pretty much wrapping up that work for HVAC with the exception of Piper School. New cameras are being installed to make sure that there's a global view around all of our school sites. There were some blind spots, those are being addressed now. As far as 3,000 Ridgeland, we are keeping up every time, every week, rather. There's a meeting with the architect and the management team that appraises Mary and others about the inventory of purchases. They give a five-week, a head look and a three-week look back at what the progress is, and they are on budget, on schedule, and talking about furniture now. We talked a little bit about long-range facilities plan and what that entails, and we talked a little bit about bringing the question of what to do with Laverne Education Center into those meetings going forward so that we can keep that top of mind. Did I miss anything there?
Oh, I just wanted to add something that a lot of the projects we did this summer, we did in-house, so we saved money doing that, so yay, thank you.
Thank you. Policy.
That's also me. Okay, so we had a couple of things for a second read that are being approved. I think notably being approved tonight, we had some changes around providing communication in English and Spanish for policy 810. Policy 5100, we adopted language for training for teachers on harassment. We're going to be going with every, every two years, which is keeping us within the policy parameters. And we had a second read on our hiring process, policy 530. And also we had, what was it, AI policy? I don't remember the number now, but we do, we did, we are adopting a, an AI policy that has been recommended through Press Plus.
Thank you. Legislative report?
Yes. The Illinois General Assembly passed a 55.2 billion budget for the fiscal year 2026. As has been spoken earlier, our state and some of our state and federal funds haven't been released yet, and we're going to keep an eye on that. Some key legislation that I like to note that has been passed, we have SB 1740, which eliminates certain mandates and establishes a course to review and recommend outdated requirements, requirements, I'm sorry. SB 1920 creates guidance for school districts on the use of AI in elementary and secondary education. HB 3247 codifies the Supreme Court decision which prohibits the denial of a free public education based on a child's perceived or actual immigration status or of that of the parent. And there are, one, two, three, four, four key legislation bills that have been stalled, they have been stalled. So we're still going to continue to look at these that might affect, affect us as well. HB 3772 is an initiative that puts limits on the use of suspensions and expulsions in grades K through 2. SB 2427 is a cell phone use policy during instructional time. SB 1937 is an overhaul of the state's Tier 2 pension system. And SB 243, our amendments to the FOIA and OMA bill, the Open Meetings Act bill. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Correspondents?
We had no correspondents.
Thank you. Okay, any public comments? Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlined in Board Policy 2 to 30. Please state your name. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Third Order Alderman, Richard Leja. So I'm here tonight to invite everyone to the first and annual Depot District Summer Fair. So everyone knows the construction was going on for like forever, for four years at least. And now it's over and everything is really looking good. There's a few things I have to tinker with, but we're trying to bring everyone back. So I was coming up with ideas to try and revitalize and get people back into the depot. So you all know I did the retiring of the flag ceremony with the Boy Scouts earlier in the year. And then we were trying to get all the flags back up. So four years ago, I, there was over a 20-year period where we did not have American flags in the Depot District for whatever reason. So I brought all that back, but after the first year, the, the construction started and we could not put flags up anymore. So I was trying to get all that up before the fourth. David Holsberg and the BDC was very, very helpful. They got the right brackets up on the light poles and they replaced all the flags for us. And George Lambisus was like a workhorse. I could not have gotten any of this done without him. We were trying to get it up before the fourth, so we were almost done, we had a few left. So early, early in the morning on the fourth, George and I were out there trying to finish it all, but we got it all up before anybody came down in the area. But now we're doing something really big, and this again, George was the, the brains behind this idea. The Summer Fest will highlight, this year we're highlighting youth performers. There'll be dance, music, bands, and even some comedy. It's Saturday, July 26th, this Saturday, on Grove Avenue from Stanley to Kennelworth, we'll have vendors, foods, and crafts. So you're all invited, come on down and let's just all start revitalizing the Depot District. Thank you.
Thank you.
One to four is the main event. Thank you.
Thank you. Action items on the consent agenda. Items may be removed from the consent agenda under request of any one member. Items not removed may be adopted by general consent without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the board. Can we please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
How motion?
Second. Roll call.
Ironay. Steinfeld, aye. Dranth?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlined in the Board Policy 2 to 30. Seeing no one. Board member comments?
I have a comment. Sorry, I've dropped the ball on this, so I do hope there's many people watching at home. We are doing our annual uniform give-back at the picnic. Any gently-used middle school uniforms, we are trying to collect. I have done a poor job at collecting those, so if anyone knows anyone who might have some or can tell everyone to please reach out to me, or they could even just bring them to the picnic. We've had people show up with bags of clothes to donate on that day, which is super helpful. I'm going to reach out. I know the principals at Heritage and Freedom have also been collecting, so I'm going to reach out to them once they're not, I'm not bothering them during their summer break. And so if anyone can spread the word, I would really appreciate it. We love to be able to give everyone at the picnic some items so they don't have to go out and buy all new stuff and we can reuse and also save the planet. So, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Can you, just for transparency, tell us the date and time of the picnics for people out there?
I can do that. It is, hold on, I gotta look at my calendar. It is Sunday, August 17th, is that right, George? Okay, yes. And I believe it's 12 to 2.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board member comments?
Yes, Caballero. I just want to say thank you for another great meeting. This, this is great, I love it. Mary, thank you for providing that information ahead of time and incorporating it into your presentation. I feel like this went so smoothly. It was great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to officially congratulate and welcome RJ, our new technology director. He made it through his first board meeting, and we officially welcome you here in District 100.
Yes, we'd welcome you. Okay, can, can we motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
Caballero.
Okay.
Roll call, Ironay, Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld, aye. Butler?
Aye.
Dranth?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and please take time to rest before the kids, our kids come back to school. And thank you for all you do all year round.